I call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Ms. Melvin Waller?
Yes.
Solvi?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Here.
Yes. Citizen comments, we have one item on the agenda, Melanie, you are up.
All right. I put this down in front of you, it's some statistics that the Minnesota Housing Partnership puts together, and they gather this information from the census, from D, you know, employment information, et cetera. And there are lots of bits and pieces of information on this form, but there's just a few that I think are important and that we probably don't want to ignore, so I just wanted to share that with you a little bit today and tell you a little bit about what the housing authority is doing and get your comments on that if you have any. So, the parts that I want to talk about are the areas where people are called cost burdened, which means they're paying more than thirty percent of their income for housing. And in Stevens County, about a third of the renters are renters, or a third of the population are renters and not homeowners. In the city of Morris, that percentage is quite a bit higher, in the forty percent range. But Stevens County has the highest overall percentage of cost burdened renters in the entire state, at fifty-two percent. And thirty-four percent of all renters are actually paying more than half of their income for housing. And just as a little side note, I'd encourage you to kind of calculate that in your own life. I calculated mine and was kind of surprised at how much lower mine is than I thought it might be. Another concern, I think, is some of the statistics about seniors who are cost burdened, and not only seniors who rent, but seniors who are homeowners as well. And those percentages are high as well, fifty-six percent of the senior renters are cost burdened in Stevens County, and fifteen percent of the homeowners. And that figure is, if you talk to demographers, is expected to grow because, of course, social security doesn't keep up with inflation, housing utility costs continue to grow. So, that is another concern, I think, that we need to take note of. One other fact, of momma renter households, there's this widening gap between the median income and the median rent. So, the median income has actually declined by ten percent since two thousand, and the median rent has increased by twenty-six percent. So, there's this gap of thirty-six percent between what people can afford and what they're earning. So, all this cheerful news is being brought to you because, of course, as a housing authority, this is something that I think we need to pay attention to. This shows that we have some work to do. And I think Morris specifically has some things to think about. It seems that Morris is kind of going through an adjustment period as student population declines, vacancies are increasing in the community, there's a couple new buildings going up that are having an impact on, you know, the houses in the community that are rentals. And I think we need to pay attention to that and maybe put together some kind of plan for how to maintain the housing in the community, keep the neighborhoods in good shape, et cetera. So, right now, the housing authority is working on two different surveys. One is concerning seniors, and that's going to be a little bit longer process. But we need to find out what their living situation is currently and what they feel their needs are. And kind of get to know where seniors in between maybe are at. And I think we need to use resources like public health and some of those places that work with seniors on a regular basis. But we need to find out if we've got resources that aren't being used in the community. Maybe we need to do educational things about energy assistance, et cetera. And then the other survey that we're doing is something that I don't think has been done, to my knowledge, but we are surveying employees that work in Morris. So, all the employees that work in Morris will hopefully get a survey, and we're trying to find out, do they live in the community or do they live outside of the community? If they live outside of the community, why is that? And there are a multitude of reasons for that, some that will, you know, always be. Either they own a family farm somewhere or whatever, or spouse works elsewhere. But we have all sorts of anecdotal stories about why that is, but we need some concrete facts if we're going to take action and if we need to change that statistic. So, we're trying to get down to the nitty gritty with that information. So, we're working with the Center for Small Towns on the surveys. And hopefully, that will be done at the end of the summer. And it would be my hope that after that information is gathered, we can maybe get people together from the broader community and talk about, you know, some of the things that we think maybe we need to happen and how we would go about doing that. I think for Morris, we kind of need to look at housing in a, for lack of a better word, because I can't think of one, is a way to be more holistic about the community as a whole and the housing as a whole in the community. If there's lots of little rental houses in the community that are not going to be used that way anymore, what's going to happen to those and how are we going to maintain the neighborhood and the market value and all those kinds of things. So, I think there's a number of things that need to be discussed and I think the research will help us see a few things a little bit more clearly. So, that's what I wanted to share with you. If you have questions, I can answer those, but you can always contact me if you have.
Just curious, on the median renter income there, it shows for the years, that's per person or per household?
Per household, these are household numbers, yep.
And this would include college students that would be considered going to school full-time, so they're probably not working a full-time job also?
That should be, yes.
So?
Yeah, right. That certainly can be part of that.
That median rent, then, that doesn't account for one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom? How does that kind of come into the mix?
Those are weighted averages.
Okay.
So, depending on how many one bedrooms you have and two bedrooms, they weight those averages. You get some median rent. But right now, I can tell you what's called the payment standard, which is the highest. The voucher program would pay for a one-bedroom is six oh nine. So, that's kind of where the market is at right now, you know, and then it increases as we increase the number of bedrooms.
Okay.
So, when you talk about, oh, sorry, a plan, Melanie, what, who do you think is going to, I mean, who are you thinking's at the table for this plan? Or what are you, what would you like to see in a plan for housing in Morris or Stevens County?
I think we need to get, you know, landlords together, senior representatives together, employers in our community who might be trying to recruit employees. I think we kind of need to get a broad spectrum of perspectives to talk about all those issues. The other thing I think down the road we can think about is the state of Minnesota has put in place a statute where if a community forms a housing trust, and that would be a group of people who handle whatever they plan to do, they have to write up a plan about what they want to do with that money and how that would be used. But if you raise money from employers or part of the levy or whatever, however you raise funds in your community, the state will match those dollar for dollar for a housing trust. So, I think that would be a resource that would be smart to take advantage of.
Now, the, you have the flow of the market, I guess, if you will, housing market, I think we all know Morris is pretty strong, and there's just not a lot of houses available. There are certain ranges where there's...
Places to buy, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To buy, so, of course, that puts pressure on the rental markets and probably prices up. So, I don't know how that all comes into the mix, I guess, if you will. Obviously, every year is going to be different, you know, if the housing market sort of goes down and maybe things will level off in the rental, I don't know if it's going to correct itself or not. That's what I guess my point is.
Well, right now, vacancy rates in Morris are still very high for rentals.
Okay.
Okay? And we just did kind of a cursory survey in the last few months, and the vacancy rates are in the twelve percent region. So, that's an issue. That actually may have an impact on the rents, which may have an impact on people who are cost burdened. I don't know, but the other part of that, if you, you know, if you flip your hat and say, I'm a landlord and I bought this house and I need this much money to make a cash flow, lowering the rents isn't always a great option for them. You know, there's many sides to the housing. That's why I think you need a really broad group of people having that discussion so you can see all the different points of view and somehow come up with a plan that makes the community stronger and keeps the housing stock in decent shape and meets the needs of the people in the community.
Melanie, the Center for Small Towns, they're a great, great place to go for surveys and stuff like that. Do you think they're going to try to do, well, at least on the onset, all of employers and employees? Or are they looking to just to do a small subset or?
The plan is to do the largest employers.
Okay, okay.
I did bring up this with you, but...
Yeah, yeah.
But to survey the largest employers and try to get a large portion, you know, a large percentage of the employees. And if we can, you know, we want to work with the employers to help us get a really good response to that survey, hopefully.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, I'm a little concerned about, and I agree with that, doing that, I mean, that's the biggest bang for the buck, of course. I'm a little concerned about overlooking some of the smaller employers because probably they're going to be in your lower income and the answers might be kind of important, what you find from them, but we'll leave it to the experts to do that.
Well, and, you know, we can talk about that, about how you would go about adding all those in. And maybe, maybe we do the first section with those large employers and add this, you know, later down the road if we think we are missing information that's important.
Yeah, well, you know, it'd be pretty easy to, you know, to pick up, you know, a dozen of them or a dozen or so smaller employers and see how their responses change, you know, compared to the large employees. That's just an observation, yeah. Great, looking forward to the results, more information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Any other citizens' comments that aren't already on the agenda? We have no public hearings tonight, we have reading and approval of minutes from our last meeting from June eleventh.
I'll move approval of the regular minutes from the June eleven meeting.
Any discussion or comments on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And the minutes, condensed version from the same minutes. I will second that, any discussion or comments on it? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. We have a consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, application for exempt permit from the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association, community ed information, and a revenue and expenditure report for May. I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or any questions on any of the items? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Okay. Petitions, requests, and communications. I make a motion to appoint Stephanie Sid to the tourism board.
I'll second that.
Any...
Do you know her?
Is that Juan's wife?
Juan's wife from New Mexico.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We have a resolution scheduling a public hearing on a project by Farmington Health Services and St. Francis Health Services of Morris.
So, we have two visitors here, we have Carol Raw from St. Francis Health Services, the leader, correct?
Correct.
Of St. Francis Health Services, and we also have Aaron Youngdoll, who's with Northland Public Finance, and I've asked him to actually come up and just explain what this issue is. I think everybody here has done one before, Kim's new to it. So, the last one we did was in two thousand fourteen, so actually, this issue is going to refund that two thousand fourteen. But if you want to just come up and explain what the issue is and how we're doing it.
I'd be happy to. My name's Blaine, Mr. Mayor, member of the city council. As Blaine said, my name is Aaron Youngdoll and I work at Northland Securities, and we are going to serve as the underwriter of some tax exempt bonds for St. Francis Health Services, which will be co-borrower with its affiliate Farmington Health Services. St. Francis Health Services has their corporate offices here in Morris, and they also have a senior housing project here, as they also have in twelve other communities? Twelve other communities, mostly rural communities and mostly serving moderate to low-income seniors. Their project in Farmington, which they're very appreciative that you helped them to get taxes on financing in two thousand fourteen, they're doing an expansion which is almost complete. And so, the purpose would be, today would be our request to have you pass a resolution to call a public hearing to allow St. Francis Health Services along with St. Francis Farmington, Farmington Health Services, excuse me, to issue up to twenty-two million in tax exempt bonds. The city of Morris will only act as a conduit, pass-through issuer. There is no obligation on any of the debt to the city. The IRS code from nineteen eighty-six allows cities to help out nonprofits such as St. Francis to issue debt on a tax exempt basis because it saves them on their interest costs, typically like about, in today's market, about a percent and a half. So, it really keeps their farming costs down and helps them provide the services that can serve as their mission. Any questions or any more that you'd like to do about St. Francis or the process?
This has really just been an issue of different towns not having the ability to do it because we're not using our bonds this year, is that correct?
Right, that's, that's one of the primary reasons. You know, and for me, I've been doing these for thirty years, I think, going back to Breckenridge, when we would do them in Breckenridge too, for St. Francis in Breckenridge. But it's, it's something that the laws allow to happen, it doesn't affect us at all. The first thing we look at when we look at this is whether or not we have any bond issues that this might affect. We have a ten million dollar limit on bank, bank, bank bonds, basic qualified bonds. So, if we did have a bond issue that we're going to be doing, like Farmington is doing their own bond issues down there, from what I understand, then it would affect, it would, could affect our interest rates. Sometimes what you can do is you can work it into the deal that, you know, any increased costs in our interest rates will be covered based upon this. But it's very, it's very commonplace to do these kind of issues, and as I said, we did it in two thousand fourteen. St. Francis is a company that's located here, it's very important to us in Morris. They take care of a lot of people in town with their facilities, so it's just a good thing to do and I've always felt it's important to be able to facilitate these kind of things and it does not affect us one bit at all. We have no obligation whatsoever with regards to these bonds.
And this is a per-year deal with the ten million, right?
Right.
So, make sure we could do that too, it's just...
Right.
That was the issue last time we did it, fourteen, was Farmington was also a few involved or they couldn't get it done.
Yep. And some cities don't like to do it.
Yeah, I think that might be the issue.
I mean, they just, and some of it is because they don't understand it. Some of it is because, you know, they don't, they don't have a connection like we do with St. Francis being here. But most bigger cities, perhaps some kind of facility, whether it's a hospital or a nursing home or assisted living, some kind of facility in their community.
In your memo, you mentioned that we have our bond consultant look over the documents?
That's the other thing that we do is, I'm not very good at legal work, so we do have two consultants, actually, Ellers does our financial consulting and Briggs and Morgan does our bond consulting, and they've shared this information with the Briggs and Morgan people and their attorneys have looked it over and are saying that it's okay to go ahead and do it. So, that's one of the things that we do require if we're going to participate in this is that our bond consultants will look it over.
And the borrower does take all the costs, the city's costs, out of the year, so.
Good, great, thank you. Great, any other questions of Carol or Aaron? Thank you.
No, I think it's a good idea, I've seen that we don't have any bond issues this year and it isn't putting a burden or we're not on the block for it here. So, I'll move on the resolution scheduling a public hearing on the project by Farmington Health Services and St. Francis Health Services of Morris.
And the date will be July twenty-third at five fifteen?
At five fifteen.
All right. And the date will be July twenty-third at five fifteen?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Ms. Melvin Solvi?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Eric Hayes?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, then we have a resolution approving the sale of industrial park land to Jerry Suceve.
So, we have Jerry and Pete here, Hentges. This is, I explained in the resolution what they're doing, they're going to, they're going to purchase, if approved by the city council and the EDA, twelve point three eight acres of the industrial park land. This is the land that was originally sold to the Bachmans and they wound up building on their own site in the industrial park. The purchase price is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. It's in order to do a propane and petroleum product distribution center, as I indicated in the memo. They're looking at five to seven million dollars worth of investment on this site and looking at creating jobs. So, you're, right now, you're looking at about nine jobs, so they're going to have truck drivers and they're going to have somebody managing the facility and somebody taking care of the paperwork, probably. But it's a good use of the property, I did talk to Aaron Jordan about this, and it is going to require a conditional use permit to be looked at by the planning commission. Even though they do have a petroleum distribution site there now around the corner, he suggested that we still do a conditional use permit on this property. And so, what we're going to do is we'll schedule that for the planning commission, if it's approved, the planning commission at their next meeting in July to look at that conditional use permit. But, so, I did provide some documentation in your packet as to, you know, what they're planning on doing along with the survey map. We do have a sixty-foot easement on the west side of this property. That's our storm sewer line that goes through there, and so actually, the price of the property was discounted to reflect that storm sewer line easement that we have on that side. I mean, the interesting part about it, it's probably going to be the shortest delivery Westmore is going to make of a new tank, isn't it? Because they'll be, they probably don't need a truck, they'll just be able to figure out a way to roll it over there. So, it's a good use of land and, you know, like I said, it creates jobs. So, my recommendation is that the city council pass a resolution to sell it. Originally, like I said, we did have it sold, and then for a while, there was nobody that was really interested in it, and then they came in and they showed an interest in it. And then eventually, Bonanza Bean also showed an interest in it, but they knew that the Hentges were interested in it before they were, and so they waited to see what they were going to do with the property, and that's, that's really where we're at now.
Blaine, what role is the conditional use permit?
It's just a, it's just a understanding of what the ordinance is, the zoning ordinance is. So, I don't know, in the original, how long was your original plant, how long has that been here?
Two thousand, ninety-nine?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, so at that time, you know, I don't think it had a conditional use permit? We don't know, we didn't find one, but when Aaron read the rules and regulations for industrial parks?
I knew that before last one was Bill Kewes.
Is it, is it actually in the city, Jerry?
No, it's in there in town yet.
Right.
What's that? Oh, his is, oh, yours is across the street. So, the things that typically will, will trigger a conditional use permit, anything that's explosive? And that's really where this one falls into place. Usually, it's, you know, sounds, smells, you know, heavy traffic, those kind of things. Well, in this case, you're dealing with, you know, propane and petroleum products, and actually, there's some very specific rules and regulations on how they can put that together and they've been in and talked to Mike Jacobson about that because they'll have to get a building permit, you know, the spacing of the tanks and separating them and all those kind of things. And it's, it's just, that's the reason why it needs a conditional use permit.
Do you foresee any problems with that, with the planning commission?
No, I wouldn't imagine there would be, I mean, it's in the right spot to do that. And like I said, the irony is the company that makes the tanks is almost right across the street, so.
The previous purchaser had issues on getting some assistance with utilities. I'm sure they're going to... I'm sure they're gonna need some type of utilities to the property, but being the new jobs, it's not competing with other jobs from another community.
Yeah, no.
That shouldn't be any issues for them to qualify to force to get some assistance to do some of the infrastructure.
But they're, I think they're good getting in there the way it is.
Yeah, for now.
For now.
As it, as it grows. I think you can explain a lot of things with the process.
As you guys know, we're kind of unique, unique county and everybody's going and stuff happens and happens fast in the fall. And the infrastructure on propane is, I mean, you gotta grow with it. And we just kinda, number one, we have our old facility that we got and, uh, kind of making, uh, I guess making it more open to obviously we're on with.
Our old facility, of course, but this new facility is gonna open new windows for a lot of different things as far as, uh, you know, the fall here when things, propane kind of gets volatile, you know? And, uh, and it's been open windows for other guys too to come in. And it's gonna be, I mean, eventually, and I think you see in that pack, it, it takes a while for Westmore to build, you know? It's not gonna happen overnight, you know, that kind of gallons of storage. But that's eventually what, what we're.
But you will want water and sewer to this facility?
Eventually, probably we will. We won't, I don't think we need it right away. Um, cause as, I mean, basically it's a propane storage. So basically we're just going in there and get the trucks. We actually, believe it or not, we just got, uh, Jerry just mentioned we bought another four point ninety-eight. We didn't have water and sewer until we bought their shop.
Just recently.
Two years, two years ago, so.
But that was part of the discussion on the previous property purchaser.
Right.
Being it was transporting jobs from other communities that we didn't qualify.
Right. So they would qualify if they need assistance.
For some of the stuff.
Yeah, as, as far as jobs going, you know, our facility that we're running right now, um, we're maxed out. We need more employees there the way it is. Uh, you definitely, uh, to haul and to swing like that, we definitely would need to add trucks and drivers. We're good the way it is. We'd have to have somebody oversee it also, so.
Roughly how big of a radius would this facility feed or take care of?
About a ninety thousand gallon tank is around like a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty foot long and.
But as far as customer, for base now, what we're going and I'm just curious.
As far as, uh, we, yeah, as far as the region that we go, it, it goes all the way up to South Dakota or Redfield.
So I mean, it's covering a big area. It's not like we're talking about a, a ten or a twenty mile radius. We're talking about a big area to our west especially probably.
Yeah, and, and as we all know, as, as agriculture and the farms grow, a lot of them are going with transport loads. So I mean, the days of the, the small trucks are kinda, I mean, it's getting less and less. So this is a facility more built for loading, unloading transports too. Where our facility is just bomb tails that hold about thirty-five hundred gallons compared to nine thousand, ten thousand.
But also in reading through some of the information that the, the critical fall of the year, when the demand is there and the fluctuation of pricing or shortages that to have product in the facility that you're able to take care and hopefully take care of some of that fluctuation or demand?
Yeah, of course, like it's not just like our corn drain customer. We have a lot of, you know, guys that have hog farms and, you know, dairies and stuff. So at the same time, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of our customers and, and this would sure, this would sure be a step forward.
In two thousand nine, we also helped out, uh, some of the smaller.
Cooperatives.
Cooperatives or people like us that could not get the product. And this will give them a little opportunity to, well, you know how you can't depend on rail anymore, you know? And since they took the pipeline on a Vansum, it's, it's all around. That kind of, kind of stirred the thinking of all this. So.
Typically, like if you, there's a lot of stuff in our region, the closest pipeline is Sandmore, Iowa to go get a load of propane. Um, there's a lot of pipelines, there, there's a lot of railcar facilities in the region, but they're just not reliable by the time, you know, the railroad gets in here, they may be a month after the corn drying season and farmers need it. No, you know, they only got, you know, a three, four week window to get stuff out. And, um, their corn, their corn dryers are getting bigger. A lot of these guys have dryers that are just as big as the elevators used to be, you know?
Well, it's kind of neat. We can put in a tank fifty thousand dollars cheaper than most people because there's no freight.
Oh, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, when you, when you say a Westmore, it is kind of neat because they, they have it on their robot and they'll probably just walk that ninety thousand gallon tank right across the street on a robot tracks right toward Insta-Gol, so.
They did, they did a thirties or sixties for us already. They just walked it right down the road.
And, uh, yeah, we're, we're blessed to have them next door because there's guys that are in the petroleum business that travel three hundred miles just to get a truck fixed and we go right next door.
And also use our facility for testing their trucks too, uh, or quite a bit. Like, uh, somebody will, for instance, say, I have, I'm having trouble loading my truck or something wrong with the truck. What really is the customer's plant is the problem. So they'll bring them over to our plant, hook up the truck, load fine and they'll be able, they actually prove to the customer, well, you better fix your plant on that truck. There's quite a bit of that that goes on.
So would you be able to utilize the, the rail for getting your source or you're gonna be trucking it in from another pipeline?
We'll do all our trucking in the off season.
But coming from facilities?
Sandmore or.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious. All right.
We do buy some rail, but very little just because it's on.
Okay, just curious Aaron, just where things are at. Thank you.
The transportation thing, you know?
Right.
Well, and just to quickly finish up on, you know, you were asking about the roads and Bachman were looking at going in there. They were gonna come in on the west road by, on the west side of Prairie Trailer. And so then we were looking at trying to bring in utilities and build a road. They'll be able to come in, they're buying the whole thing. So now they'll be able to come in the middle road, uh, Griner Drive where Bonanza Bean comes in. And that's already there and it's built and it'll come right to the corner of where they wanna come into their property. So, so it's already accessible for them.
Sounds like everything was in position, access?
Sounds like a huge addition for our community, our area, our region.
Absolutely. So this will be the final parcel at the industrial park?
Right.
Okay. That brings up a different question for later.
That's exciting stuff.
Very.
I will move on to resolution for the sale of the industrial park land to Jerry's U-Save in the, uh, area and the dollar amounts that we've discussed. I'll say.
Any further discussion? Jerry and Pete, I would just like to, uh, compliment you on, um, you know, going forward and, and investing into the, to the area. Uh, you know, in this day and age when we're losing people and losing, uh, stores, um, it's really good to see somebody buckling down and say, hey, we're gonna build this. You know, and that, that also goes for like your, your car wash that you're currently working on and stuff like that. It's really a great investment to the city. Thank, thank you.
We appreciate more.
We're so good at.
Yeah, like I'm dating eighty-one or eighty-two. Hey, whoa, I don't know what kind of town I'm getting in because we got the eighties and more. Anyway, uh, Morris has been with our families. We all stick around for a while.
Great.
Good.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please?
Ms. Homer Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Solvi?
Yes.
Mary Pease?
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a resolution accepting a bid and authorizing a contract for two thousand nineteen airport pavement rehab project.
Well, and I'll just start out by saying anytime we do airport projects, we're following FAA rules and sometimes that limits people from being interested in, in whether or not they even bid on projects. This is probably one of the most interesting bids I've seen because the engineer's estimate was what ninety-five thousand dollars?
Ninety-five, nine.
And, uh, we had two bidders, Farner Asphalt Sealers from Oclare, Wisconsin, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three. Uh, as, as the letter indicated from the engineers, they've worked with them before and don't have any issues with them. And then Asphalt Surface Technologies Corp. of St. Cloud for a hundred and thirty-four, five forty. So one was about forty-two percent lower and the other one was about forty-two percent higher. But they're recommending that we go with Farner Asphalt and, and this is a FAA project. So the funding is paid for by the federal and state government as well as a small local share. So our, our local share will be a little bit less just because of the, the bid that we got. So the recommendation is to go ahead and award the contract to them. And then actually what happens with the FAA projects, we have to have a bid and a contract in hand, then we apply for the grant and then we'll get the grant back and then we'll be able to do the project.
So this is, uh, accepting the bid is actually contingent on getting the grant?
Getting the grant money. So it's, wait, we've run into problems with the timing on some of the grants. But I think the funding right now is pretty good at both federal and the state level. Legislature's done, so they put money into their state share and the feds, I think, put money into the fed share.
Now, if we get the grant, is there a city share portion of that? Is it ten percent or forty?
Yeah, yeah, it's ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
And so that'll come out of the public improvement fund.
Okay.
And typically, depending on when the grant's actually approved, uh, they may do it this fall, they may do it next spring. Cause sometimes with the construction projects, it depends on the timing of the grant. Federal government's on a different cycle than we are as far as their budgets. So they're finishing up, uh, in, uh, September and then starting a brand new federal year in October and we're finishing up in December. But the engineers will coordinate all that.
Okay, I'll move approval of the resolution accepting a bid and authorizing a contract for the twenty nineteen airport pavement rehabilit- rehabilitation project.
Easy for you to say.
Obviously not.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please?
Ms. Homer Bellixon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Solvi?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Mary Pease?
Yes. Then we have resolution selecting a tourism marketing firm and authorizing a website rebuild.
So it's taken us a while to get to the point where we can make this recommendation back to the city council, but the tourism board's been doing a lot of really good work looking into this issue and, and, uh, actually as I indicated in the memo, we looked at, uh, the process for dealing with it. Originally we talked about doing an RFP, but when it, when you're dealing with a subject like this, none of us are experts in marketing. So when you're trying to drop a plan to get bids or quotes for marketing and you don't know how to market, it's really difficult to do. So, so the, the board really looked at finding marketing companies that are around here and that's not necessarily easy to do either. We had one that we're working with, Data, uh, and I think everybody was in agreement that we didn't necessarily like what they're doing anymore and we actually terminated that contract. But we did find two firms. Uh, one was, uh, Spark Twenty-Seven Creative out of Alexandria, Minnesota. I, I think she's done some work with the university. Uh, and the other one's a company called Click Content Studios out of Fargo, North Dakota. They're actually part of the Forum Communications Company. Uh, even though they're independent of them, they, they are part of the, the, the company and they wind up using resources within that company. So it's, uh, one of the things that I think the board thought was a positive of that company is they had many more resources and actually some of the, some of the, uh, video work that's been done already with the tourism board, uh, was done by this company out of Fargo. So they've been down here and they know Morris. Actually the person that, uh, is the main contact is a UMM grad, uh, which we seem to find all over the place. But they just seem to be the best fit. And so then what the tourism board is saying, you know, the first step is we have to find a company that does tourism and select them. And, and that's part of the recommendation. The other thing is that our website is terrible. The tourism website is terrible and it needs to be redone so that's more interactive and, and, you know, you, you reach out to the right people and all that kind of stuff. And, and we know and understand that websites are very expensive to redo. Anybody that's tried to hire somebody to do one, the city, we've kind of shied away from having our city website rebuilt just because of the cost, even though we probably should. Cause, cause it's not, not a very, and actually Reggie and I talked this morning about the police department website. But, but, so that's the second part of the recommendation is we hire these guys to be our marketing company and then we hire them to redo the tourism website. And then we'll sit down with them, talk to them about, um, you know, what they can do for marketing strategy, what they can do for, uh, specific campaigns for marketing Morris for tourism. Um, you know, one of the things that we just, we just had the Germans here visiting and we know and understand that there's a lot of people that come to Morris from other countries just to see what's going on with, uh, the egg. There's a big egg conference that's coming up here in, in July where, you know, there's a lot of people that are gonna be coming here. So, uh, and then we have certain things that we know about like the Stevens County Fair and the Prairie Pioneer Days and all those kind of things that we wanna do advertising for and marketing for, but we need a company that can do it for us. So, so that's how it got here. Kevin sits on the tourism board. He's been part of the discussions and, uh, it was really a unanimous recommendation to, to select this company and, and to get started on the process of building a marketing campaign. One of the things I shared with you was, I think I shared with you the, the budget. Did I put that one in there or maybe I just put it in the res, the memo that I had? Now I get the budget in there. So right now there's about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in the lodging tax fund, uh, and we take in about sixty-five thousand dollars a year that can be used for marketing. So that's where the funds will come from, lodging tax revenue. And then we provide, I provided some information that they gave to us that you could look at too. So that's the recommendation.
And I just think it's an exciting point. I guess I've been on that board since I've been, uh, been elected and it's been kind of an up and down roller coaster trying to get things accomplished. And I think we have, I can speak for the rest of the people in the tourism board that it's gonna be nice to work with a different company and, and now we really control our own destiny, you know, we can have to rely on somebody else to do that. It's exciting.
I liked the discussion part of it that, um, they felt that our brand was pretty good.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, that's always part of it, that if you don't have to redo that right now, it's probably a good thing. I like it too, it starts here.
I'll move on to resolution selecting a tourism marketing firm and authorizing the website.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote for the resolution, please?
Ms. Homer Waller?
Yes.
Solvi?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mary Pease?
Yes. Great, we have a resolution to enter into an agreement for a twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one or two-year operating grant.
Yeah, this is the standard grant application for transit funding. The only thing that changed is now they're gonna do a two-year operating grant. So that, that, it's very good. That it takes a while to put these things together and provide all the information. One of the things that they recently did was a five-year, uh, capital planning, uh, study that we participated in and, and that was actually part of the reason why, uh, the state came back and looked at doing a couple of electric trains, buses, cause that was in our capital plan. But, but this is just a resolution, uh, allowing us to enter into a two-year grant agreement. You don't have to worry about applying next year again.
But this is just operations? It doesn't, doesn't count for a new transit bus?
No, it's just the operations.
Okay.
I'll move a resolution, resolution to enter into an agreement for a twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, two-year operating grant?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? We'll have a ro- uh, roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Hunter Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dellicson?
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. City managers report recommendations, first the twenty-twenty budget guidance.
Yeah, so I'm, I don't plan on going through it all. Uh, a lot of it is the same. Um, there are some things that we know now that we maybe didn't know last year when I did it, so I had to update it. Like the fact that the legislature's done and we know that they approved local government aid. Uh, and we're gonna get about fifty-five thousand dollars more, uh, next year in our local government aid package. So, uh, this, this one, uh, suggests, uh, uh, up to a three percent increase in taxes. And I think I put in the memo, you know, that produces about forty-seven thousand dollars. We know that, uh, wages are settled for next year, 'cause it's the final year in a three-year contract. Uh, you just heard about insurance at the last meeting, wasn't a pretty picture. I think workers' comp was up twenty-two percent. Liability insurance was up about twelve percent. So then, uh, part of that liability insurance, so was the new water treatment plant. And actually, there was one item in that that changed after you got done with your meeting. There's an old storage tank that's part of the, um, the old water plant, but it was put on the schedule separately from the old water plant. So we pulled the old water plant off, but that storage tank has to come off the insurance code too. And so Deb caught that and took care of that, 'cause it's gonna be coming out. Um, you know, there's just, uh, a, a few things in there. I don't know if you got a chance, we're gonna have the last payment for, the last levy for the loader lease. And we'll have a discussion about that during, uh, um, the, the budget process. We do know that there's other pieces of equipment that we have to look at in the future for replacing. So we'll be talking about that. Um, this one does leave the workforce the same, uh, which is what I've indicated, um, every year. You know, just because of the nature, the fifty-five thousand dollars is not gonna go a long way. And if you do two to three percent increase in taxes altogether, if you start adding up insurance and, and wages and stuff like that, it gets eaten up pretty quick. Um, so I don't know if you have any questions about anything that's on there or if you have suggestions for other thing that's, things that are, should be put on there. I did put in here that, uh, we wanna evaluate our fleet and look at whether or not there's any options to look at other vehicles. Actually, one of the things I wanna do, uh, is I wanna look at how we're using every vehicle that we have. And maybe there's a smarter way to use, uh, different vehicles for the tasks that we're doing. You know, because not every task that we do has to have a pickup truck. But that's pretty much the go-to piece of equipment that we use unless we're doing bigger work. And, you know, we've had a chance to see some other, other, uh, places that use other different types of vehicles. So we'll sit on with the staff and talk about that. And then, uh, one of the things I, I indicated in here, just so you know, was, uh, we haven't heard back on the MPCA grant on a charging station for city hall. But if we don't get it, I would recommend that we put one on there. And then I'll go back now. I think Wrath Construction might be able to do sidewalk work for us, 'cause we don't have any contractors coming in doing sidewalk work. But, uh, we, we kinda held off when Riverview had to get out of that business. Uh, and so I'll look at getting quotes to do Green River Park and California Avenue again, like we had two years ago. Try to get back onto that. And, and then we took the tour around the bus and, you know, there's some discussion about Chiswick Field and the parking lot. And, you know, this, the summer was a, or the spring was a bad spring with that big snowstorm right at the end. And it really is hard to even, you might've been able to play baseball on the field, but you couldn't get into the parking lot on that field. Anybody that knows, has any kids or anything knows that's the case. So we'll take a look at some of that stuff, the Eastside Park Band Shelter, Shell area. Yeah.
The, uh, the maintained current workforce, um, just wanted to throw this out there. I know that, you know that the library is, is wanting to add something, probably not a lot, but something. Um, if they can work it out, and I think you need to probably work with them real close about, uh, working within their budget and, and coming up with something. Would that, uh, this would not preclude probably adding something?
No, this is, so, and I've talked to Reggie, I've talked to Public Works, uh, so we will cost out all those ideas and put them into the preliminary budget so you can see them. See what they look like. So all, this is just, this is just my, my thoughts as guidance, you know?
Okay, good.
But it doesn't preclude looking at it and costing it out. Big thing is costing it out so you can get a feel for, you know, what it costs for another full-time police officer or another full-time Public Works employee or, uh, you know, part-timers, you know? Because in some cases, it's just a few part-timers here and there. You know, and in some cases, there's revenue that's built into it. Like, for instance, uh, one of the things in our five-year plan for transit is to maybe have a transit coordinator. Uh, but then, uh, 'cause Beth winds up, we're kinda running the transit, but then Deb winds up doing the grants and stuff like that. And it, and, and other systems don't have that. There's no other system like ours here. You know, because we, we utilize the people that are working in, in city hall to do a lot of things. And, and yet at the same time, you know, probably right now ninety-five percent of that would be funded by federal and state grants. And dispatching is actually a big issue, 'cause we're still using the little earbuds while they're driving to be able to take calls and, and then try to, you know, schedule calls. And there's better ways to do it. And so that's part of what we're looking at. But we'll cost out anything that we wanna look at and then give you an idea of what it's gonna cost. And we'll go from there.
Good. Any other questions on the, uh, budget guidance? Do we just need a motion to go ahead and follow the bu- the presented budget guidance?
I'll move on that motion approving the twenty-twenty city manager budget guidance.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. City manager newsletter.
Uh, I'll just touch on two, two items and then answer any questions, 'cause we've been probably longer meetings. But, um, water treatment plant seems to be up and running just fine. Uh, I don't know if you've heard any more calls or complaints or anything. I've actually had a couple people stop and talk to me in the grocery store about how they like it. And, and, uh, I, I've actually personally had a couple calls where they wanted to know how to adjust their water softeners. Uh, we really haven't come out and said, okay, now everything's done. It's, it's, it's locked in, it's ready to go, go ahead and change your water softeners out. We haven't done that yet just because of the fact that Ryan and the guys are still learning how to run that plant and, and figuring out, and at the same time, I, I did talk to, uh, uh, one of the water softener salespeople and, and, uh, they're still amazed that we can actually soften down to five grains of hardness at a city water plant. 'Cause they didn't believe that was possible. But it is, I mean, that's what, that's what the engineer said it was gonna be, that's really where it's coming out. We haven't tried any Alberta water yet, we might have to take a trip over there and just see what, see what it's like at the end of the big long line. But, uh, you know, when it comes down to it, I, I don't know what you're noticing in your households. I, I notice in mine, it's pretty soft water, you know, and I have an on-demand one and I've adjusted it to the five grains of hardness. But I think next week, uh, we're probably gonna issue probably just a, a, a general statement to the public that, you know, it's up and running and, and now is the time to adjust your water softeners. All the big users have already done it, from what I understand, university, hospital, the assisted living facilities, all the big users. Uh, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people I've talked to have already talked, done it themselves, you know, made some adjustments. But, but that's the next step in it.
But, but there's also people that are waiting for us to tell them what to do. Because I talked to, I had a dentist appointment this morning and I asked them if they've adjusted it. No, didn't know where it's supposed to.
So we do have to make that announcement. We'll do it through the newspaper and the radio and we'll probably take, uh, take out some ads. And, and then, uh, the, uh, um, social media, we can do it on social media. But then I had an email from a gal who said, you know, I haven't heard whether or not the city water treatment plant is open. Haven't read anything or heard anything. And it's like, well, it's been in the newspaper, it's on, on the radio, it was on, I was on the radio talking. So I don't know how they get their news, you know, that's one thing.
Can you put it in, uh, the Waterville, just a little note in there?
We, we can, yeah. Yep.
Well, 'cause only half of the town would be there in July then, the other wouldn't even get it till August.
Hmm, that's.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be, it'll be an ongoing thing. But, you know, for me, for my purposes, you know, we talked to the engineers and the contractors and, I mean, you just, they actually did have a little bit of a glitch with, uh, the lime softening process where they're learning how to deal with it. And then they had to, they had to build it back up again. And, and, uh, so, you know, it, it's a matter of making, making sure everything's okay. 'Cause now they're gonna be, I think they, they're tearing, getting ready to tear down the old plant now. So the last thing they had to do was, uh, connect all the wells to the new plant. So there won't be any wells connected to the old plant anymore. And then they're tearing out all the little well houses. So if you go out there, I think there might only be one left now. And, uh, and then they're gonna tear down the old plant, take out the old tank that's sitting by it. And then the landscape and put in the new road and build back the bike path and, and, and then they'll be done.
Did you unplug yours yet, Mr. Salvi, or you talked about shutting yours off or bypassing or?
I gotta let it run out first. You had a bag of salt in there right when you guys told me it was on, so then I'll let it just go.
That might sit there a while.
Yeah, no, mine isn't like programmed or most of those.
Oh, on demand, yeah.
But I haven't, I've noticed it's, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's causing any issues.
No.
I'm pretty pleased with, uh, how it rolled out, I, I guess I was envisioning.
Actually, the water softener company people are pretty pleased too. You know, like I was talking to Echo Water and they thought for sure there'd be fifteen, twenty people cancel their rentals. Everybody that I've talked to that's got a water softener probably wants to keep it. And that's fine, you know, you just wanna make sure it's adjusted right so that you're not, you're not putting a lot of salt into the system. And then we'll start monitoring, you know, the, uh, the wastewater plant and the discharges to see what kind of salt's in there. But when you think about it, some of the biggest users of salt are the institutions and, and they've already made the adjustments, you know, because they know and understand the cost of what that is to them. The university, actually Brian Herman from the university, they sat down and they calculated out how much salt they use and how much water they use to, to do their processes. And he thinks they're probably gonna be, come out on the positive end of it. You know, where it's not gonna cost them when the new rate's going to effect, it's not gonna cost them anymore. They'll save, they'll still save money, 'cause they used a lot of salt out at the college. And then the German visit went very well. I mean, they were very happy with Eric, they love Morris, they absolutely love Morris, they love coming there. Uh, got some of the things they got to see here, um, they're really surprised about. And, uh, when we went down to the Twin Cities, uh, Monday, uh, what was it, Monday the tenth or whatever, um, they featured, uh, Morris and Zarbeck. And then at the conference on Friday, uh, down at, uh, the University of Minnesota, you know, they also highlighted, um, Zarbeck and, and actually we got to sit on a, a panel and got a lot of really good compliments from a lot of different people about what we're doing in Morris. So it's, it's really fun to have the city recognized for the things that we're doing. And it makes a big difference if the state commissioners know who you are. We talked to the, I got a picture, got a picture with the governor, so that was, that was pretty good. The mayor of Zarbeck was absolutely thrilled that he got to meet the governor in Minnesota and, and say hi to him and, and, uh, but we also talked to the Speaker of the House and was telling her a lot about what's going on here. And, you know, one of the big issues that's coming up, I, I watched the county board meeting, is garbage is gonna be the number one issue that we're gonna wanna focus on, uh, because they gotta figure out, the state's gotta work on it. We gotta figure out what's gonna happen with recycling moving forward. 'Cause you can't just shift it to a, a place down in the Twin Cities and then just pay to have it put there. What, it's, it's really getting to be a big issue. And I'll ask, answer questions if you have any other questions about what's going on.
I don't have anything, anything, uh, anything else to come before the meeting? Great, I will adjourn.